Okay, we're back from our recess to reopen the discussion with regards to the continuing public hearing on the housing strategy update. And Arthur was just answering a question for Commissioner Wickwire.
Yeah, so the intent here is to maybe hone in on some thoughts that are front and center of mind of the commission when they look at the overall package of things that they want to call out in particular to council that they think are worthy. And so they may help. Purpose of that is to help sort of reinforce the council about certain things that might want to get started in a timely manner. And so that's its purpose. The other -- and it's something that's just evolved from working with some other commissions in the past where, when I got to this point, they kind of wanted to be able to make some statements like that and not just have a matrix standing out on its own and stuff. So that's what its intent is. If it doesn't help here, that's fine.
Well, I guess to your comment, for me clustering and ADUs kind of stuck up in my mind when we were doing our discussions. Nothing in C or D really stuck out, but for A and B, those stuck out in my mind. And I don't -- other people probably have other. But for me, that'd be good for them to, you know, see that outlined a little bit more than just a part of the list.
Which ones again were those?
For me, it was the clustering, so the community design standards with a specific kind of note there. And then the ADUs, I think, was a pretty big --
So what numbers are those, Roger?
So ADUs is, well, here's listed under B-10.
And the other one was which one?
A-2.
A-2 and B-10?
Yeah. And obviously, that's from my perspective. You guys probably have some other.
Dave?
I guess it makes sense if we're calling out just what the example, what are the hot-button issues, rather than saying it's this category, because that category might be a lot of things. So that, to me, makes sense to say, these are the things that are top of mind for us of the example, of the things. And it might fall into multiple categories. There's a few, or there seems to be a little redundancy. That makes sense versus trying to put this category and saying this category is what we're interested in. That, to me, seems to reduce it down to something that may not be as helpful, but...
Yeah, I see what you're getting at.
You mean kind of like an executive summary kind of a thing?
Yeah. Yeah, of all the things that, you know, so I agree, the clustering, I mean, there's just certain topics that, however the council decides to come at them in future planning, that those are the things that are top of mind now, you know, through this process versus this category. It might be something that's in a lower position as an individual item, sorry, in a category that's not a top item within its, you know, its A, B, C ranking. But it's something that is, for us today, this is what's important to us. These other things may be longer-term planning things that are not top of mind for now. But if this is like, these are the hot-button issues we want to communicate as we hand this off. Does that make sense?
Well, in my mind, I guess if you have an issue like that, it should move to the top of the list, in the list as well. Is that right, Arthur? I mean, there is a --
Potentially, yeah.
I think they're meant to be prioritized to the extent possible.
I think I'm with Commissioner Wickwire. I don't know if it's worth looking at this at this granular of a level. I mean, our purpose of this is to develop kind of a wide range of potential strategies moving forward, and I think we've done that. I think we did a lot of work to get where we're at now. And looking at those, I think we all have different priorities, at least throughout the hierarchy. We're not all in line with the same one. And I just don't know if we're going to be just spinning our wheels and not get anywhere. And then we send it to council, and they have their own set of priorities based on what they're hearing from the public. I feel like maybe giving them more, you know, three-tiered is enough and potentially putting some comments in there if there are a couple items that we all agree are the most important.
Commissioners Orange, do you have any comments with regards to whether we -- there's been a couple different ideas on how to approach this? I want Mr. --
Well, I think spinning your wheels is a valid concern because, and it could go before city council, then they're going to end up, other things are going to grab their attention. I guess I would, maybe what would be more productive is to look, just go through your letter and see if there's any edit changes or things that we would --
Okay.
Now, yeah, okay. So is the commission then, at this point right now, we're foregoing the making it more concise? It sounds like what, unless people really wanted to do that. I guess we could look at the letter and the findings, the final findings, and see, you know, if some of these things are called out in it. Because I do feel like, I mean, I think just, you heard it up here, there's a lot of other things, but I think the ADUs and the clustering, I mean, those are a lot of things that feel like certain commissioners have talked about. Those aren't the highest priorities necessarily, but, yeah, maybe we should just, we could just, we could just spin our wheels all night long and to try to get this down into more of a narrow topic where I think we've, we've got it down to a pretty good amount of, is everybody comfortable with leaving it as it is, just kind of leaving the tiers?
Can I add a, maybe just a suggestion? Maybe there's three or four topics out of here that we all would agree that are kind of rose to the top and are, particularly with the timeliness, I think. And that we could, that could be an introductory, even a sentence, or, you know, a little paragraph that says, okay, here's, we're presenting to you our housing strategy and our time that we, you know, spent in research. These were three really important issues for us, and we think, you know, it would be worth looking at because of the timeliness and effectiveness of, you know, so maybe we just have three or four, or two, or five, or whatever, that aren't necessarily, there could be from any of those categories.
Okay, yeah, here's, I mean, oh, yeah, Commissioners Orange.
Just a quick question. Is it okay if we write on those? So we could take three minutes, go up there and put tick marks on our top three or four, and then you could pull and digest those as your focus in the letter later, and we don't really need to talk about it anymore, except that you inventory, what are the top vote-getters and use that as part of your introductory letter.
The only problem that, I was thinking that was a good idea too, and I still think it's, it might be a good idea, but I think like Roger was pointing out that maybe it's more a part of that, there's like a lot of things listed into that when you go to the matrix. And so it's not a real good representation of what we're really trying to get at. So, because it's part, it's a subpart of that part. I don't know.
So if I, let me see if I'm hearing the general direction you're getting from Commissioner Cecil's comments, which is, okay, we get this idea that here's our matrix, we just want to call out in our cover letter or cover memo that amongst those top tier, here are three or four things that front of mind, I think that's how you put it, and they would, they wouldn't necessarily be the whole strategy, it would be, and call out three or four things that you want to call to the council's attention. And it may be, you know, and just to call out because, especially because you think, and the reasons are because it's timely, or it's potentially really effective, okay? Would probably be the two things. So now, the only thing we got to figure out is, and we'll dial in some words around those, what are the three or four?
Well, I was thinking like, maybe the commissioners each, I was just thinking, maybe we could all just say one thing that we each thought, we could just go down the line and just say, what's the first topic that comes to your mind with the, I mean, it's hard to narrow it down to one, but if there is one that, because you're saying the whole purpose of this is, we could just leave it alone, but maybe there's certain things, a certain commissioner may want to make sure is brought to the attention, that's not just buried in this kind of larger matrix.
That's a good way of putting it. Making sure it's something that aren't just all buried.
Commissioners Orange?
Are you suggesting that we pick our, the one that speaks most to us, and then those would all be included in what he writes?
Right.
We're a word cloud right here.
I know we are.
It's a word cloud sentence, but basically, it doesn't even need to be --
We're not voting.
We're just trying to list it, to get a list, what's your single --
Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
That, your single important issue, if you had to name one, and maybe three out of five will have the same, and then we'll go maybe another term. It's just to try to --
I think it would be more useful if we inventory, at least, we put three picks, you know, several picks up there, and then you're going to have things land on a, I mean, if that's what you're going to do.
I don't know that the generality of these categories are going to do anything for me versus clustering or transit-oriented development.
So I would suggest along the, right, I'm trying to marry your two ideas together. It's because you keep seeing that and seeing it that level, which is only in the first column. And what you really are suggesting is probably going to be something more in the middle, right? And there's a whole lot of those in these 15. So what do you call out? And I think, and I, so this is where I think your idea of each person calling out three things, or two or three things from either one of those two, is probably the example column that you would call out. Because like you say, to unbury it. And let's see what that looks like. And see if that thing gives us something we can write around as sort of the introduction. And then you can look at what we come up with, and you can throw it away, or you can say, make this change, or we hit something. But some, I'm trying to get something, so I could draft something for you to look at. I'm trying to get some input from you so that we might be close.
So yeah, maybe everybody can just take a, take a 30 seconds or so and kind of gather your thoughts, or, once you know, just, just go ahead and speak up and let us know what the, like, two topics that come to your mind are.
Question, are we picking our top out of each category?
You say two, two? Let's just, let's go top two.
For each category?
No, total.
Just from the whole thing?
Because this is going to be like an intro sentence.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is meant to be an intro or paragraph, you know?
And you'll, your sentence, I'm sure, will say something such as, this, this, and this, or this, or something like that.
Well, I'll probably say, these things come to mind, and it'll be this one because it's really timely, this one because you think it's effective, this one, you know, we'll, we'll try to say why, if anything, rose to the top.
When everybody's ready, you can go ahead and --
I'm ready to leap in.
Okay.
So my top two favorites, because I think that other things can kind of hang off of those as well, are A-5 and B-6.
A-5, B-6.
B-6. I was going to say historic preservation, that wasn't, okay.
Anybody else want to --
I'll pop in, just so nobody else has to use these ones. Clustering, which is part of A-2. And ADUs, B-10.
Right.
I will add just one, which is transit-oriented development. One's already been spoken, so I'll just add one to the list.
And your, which number is that?
It's a B-5, which is the third category. I just see that as something that's, with all the transportation discussions going on right now, it's very important from a planning perspective. It's what's happening in Seattle.
Love these editorial comments. That's exactly what we're looking.
What's happening in Seattle right now is with light rail, and I mean, or it's been happening is transit-oriented development, and that's, is a long-term planning thing to get started on that, to me, is, you know, where the density, it's what we're doing in Canyon Park. And clustering was another one that I had.
Okay, so let me take that and sort of see how I would feed, which is --
Jason, did you, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just his comment, or just in total?
I just wanted to sort of give you an example of how I might write that up.
Okay.
Which is, because it, the three O-D, which is, there is a lot of planning going on right now on station locations, et cetera, your bus routes, and you have your Canyon Park. And because that work is going on, it's a prime opportunity now to work on this strategy. So that's an example of how I'm taking your, these points here. So after you go through it all, if you settle on certain ones, I'm going to ask for your editorial comments so that I can figure out the why. Okay? So.
So I have two. One of mine has already been said as well, and that is the TOD. And the first one, which would be my first priority, would be A-7, and specifically provide pedestrian and transit connectivity improvements and enhance public spaces. So we have three pretty significant transit projects that are going to hit Bothell in the next seven years. Two of them are Bus Rapid Transit on 405 and 522. And the second is the Second SWIFT line, which is a community transit line. It's kind of a redo of their first and most popular line. It'll hit Canyon Park, but it won't come into downtown Bothell or connect with the University of Washington Bothell. And the reason behind that is because there needs to, or, we need to improve Bothell River Highway as it connects to Canyon Park. And I think that that's something that the city has looked at in the past, and it's part of the future plans, but ensuring that that happens sooner than later, so that route is able to connect the people of North Bothell with the people of downtown and South Bothell is important. And then I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Wickwire said about the TOD, and what Arthur said is, you know, it's critical to plan the land use around where these stations are going to be, and make sure that we maximize the efficiency of these infrastructure improvements that we're going to see in the next seven years.
Can I ask a curiosity question? On the Bothell River Highway section there, I think we've just improved the majority of that segment, partially with the boulevard, and then the rest of it with the Canyon Park stuff. Are you talking about the segment in the, in the middle that's not widened, or do we need more than what we've just built?
So I may look to David for this, but I believe it's the section between where, like, Passion Tequila is and the new Safeway is. There's, there's no room for the business and transit lanes. Yeah.
For SWIFT to come to downtown Bothell, we need to Fort Lane, Bothell Way, all the way through there.
Gotcha. Sorry for sidetracking.
And it's very, it's very expensive.
Yes. It, there's a reason it hasn't been done yet. We have wetlands on one side and steep slopes on the other, and so it's going to be a difficult project, but, but it is critical, not, not just to get SWIFT downtown, but in the downtown plan, traffic projections, it was critical to avoid cut-through traffic in the neighborhoods. Without that, we're, we're going to see more and more of that.
So I've, I think the ones that I had already chosen have been, have been voiced, have already been put out there. The one thing that's big for me is the preservation of the existing housing stock. I think, and we talk about, this is a housing flight for the whole town, but we talk about trying to create affordable, or more affordable housing, and I think every time a home or an older apartment complex goes away, it's, it's a stretch to make that affordable. So I'm really glad, I'd like to see that, yeah, A-5 would be included there. And lastly, I don't know, I mean, we've already got, I think, seven things here called out, so, I know you asked us for like four or five, but I, we haven't, we haven't really, and we're trying to plan for the future of the town and as we grow. I feel like we haven't touched much, much on the housing affordability area there, the C and D. And so I'm trying to figure out a way, one thing I just want to call off, this kind of is for the seniors or the older, older people in town, a lot of the changes, the wonderful changes that are going on in our city are impacting them, and they're the ones that have lived here for a long time. So I don't know quite how to quantify that in there, but I guess, because I feel like we've already, we've already named quite a few things, so.
We'll play with that one some note.
Okay.
Can I just say why I chose what I chose?
Yes, I was going to come back and ask you that.
We are talking about affordable housing, and it speaks directly to housing.
Say that again?
We're talking about affordable housing.
Yes.
And so when we talk about preserving existing homes and providing a mechanism for that, and coming up with innovative, different housing styles.
Right. It also has, that you just made, is that the same comment you made the last meeting?
Sure. I don't know.
Pretty, you called those out, and you said, because these also have the impact of affordable, of increasing.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I think that traffic and flow of traffic are all important, but it feels like our mission here is to talk about making housing affordable, and what does that look like?
Right.
So I'm being a little myopic on that.
Right.
All right. I think you got the direction there, Arthur. Is that good?
No, I'm going to challenge you on the comment you just made. I don't have a C item on here. So you may reject it, but I want you to give me a C item to write something up on. That's partially because of the comment that was just made. And --
Oh, you mean C or D?
Or, yeah, C and or D, but in particular, I mean, C in particular, I mean, something that speaks directly to affordability.
I feel like it's D-7 for me, but.
And now, C-10, to some extent, potentially plays into your TOD. Because part of the issue there is, are there opportunities as you're doing the transit planning, create sites that might be able to be made available for affordability? So that, in fact, that has come up in other cities, and in fact, that's come up on transit right now, is they're trying to figure out with their policy, you know, state law and stuff. We know on the East Link Rail, the conversation this year is, oh, okay, well, what sites might there be in the future? I'm assuming there might be similar conversations along the bus corridors as well. So that, I don't know if that's a right-of-way thing, but that is, or immediate thing, but I know, Dave, you sort of raised that question a little bit, just a staff conversation.
Yeah. I guess as we're looking at, at park-and-ride siding in downtown Bothell, we could look at some combined development that could combine park-and-rides with affordable housing. We could look at putting TOD on top of the existing park-and-ride lot.
Now, the other pitch I would sort of put out there is C-3. You got all the way through a couple rezones that are sort of waiting, and we sort of do have this direction from council. This is on the affordable housing with capacity change. That's kind of hanging out there. So that could be, hey, we started this exercise, and with Canyon, you know, with any of the zoning actions, we think we need to have the policies and procedures in place to, are we going to do, are we going to do C-3?
Just a question. The multifamily property tax exemption?
Yes.
How significant of an incentive is that?
Well, it can be, but your city is complicated in your most likely area to use it because of your levy lid lift that you did to fund infrastructure. So it's a little more, so your future property tax revenue from the new development is needed to pay for the infrastructure. So it's a little more complicated in your case than it is in other jurisdictions cases. Now, up in Canyon Park, it might be able to be used and stuff like that, but right now, the super timely one to look at, that's the complicating factor. If you don't have any suggestions in that area of planning.
Well, you know, I think I went to, I'm sorry, and then I just think back to all the community forums. I think I went to like six of them, or five of them. And it just, yeah, what just jumped out was almost all the groups. All the groups were all, everything, everything's too expensive, there's not enough supply. I mean, that can go a lot of different directions with regards to discussion, so that all hits on the affordability standpoint. And I guess we kind of got at that earlier. Anyway, that's why I wanted to call it out, I was just thinking back to all those groups, and that's what they were calling for.
Now, you may say on, maybe the general statement is, all the priority C ones are all important, you know, and they're different, one's a land use approach, and one's going to be, you know, some of them are land use, some are other different, maybe the statement is, for section, you know, all the C priority ones, they're all pretty darn important to look at, you know? But I don't know. I mean, let me try to work on this one a little bit.
Okay. That seems a little washy when we kind of called out the other ones, but.
I mean, I would say C-3, I think would maybe even be a number three for me. We did spend a lot of time on that, and, you know, we --
The reason why I'm saying you can't make that a level three is, if any, in the --
He's saying, aren't you saying it would be your third of the top three?
Yeah, that would be, I would vote for putting that one in the, in the executive summary here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Third vote for things to be added, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
We get, did get three specific strategies with two votes each, A-2, A-5, and B-5, for what that's worth.
Well, what I'm, I'm seeing a list that's of a length that I wouldn't mind doing a sentence on each of them, and then letting you guys, you know, so you can see them and see what they look like.
That sounds great. Yeah, just bring that back to us, and I think we're at a point where, yep, sounds good.
Okay. And then you can see how they're written up and how they look as a package, and go from there. That might be easiest.
Does anybody have any thing to comment on with regards to the findings that was put together? The last pages, were they the last pages?
So you're referring to the report?
Yeah.
Draft final report?
Yes, sorry, draft final report. Anything?
I'm going to wait to review it till it's a little further along.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Oh, just wait till, wait to go.
I didn't, I'm going to wait till it's a little more, there's a lot of, it's, there's obviously a lot of progress, but I'm going to wait till the next draft to dive into it.
It's at least close enough in the ballpark that you don't need to shift course yet. Okay.
I do have one or two comments on it.
Okay.
On page, I guess it's page, page one of Attachment 5, some of the intended household types seem to miss some, what I would think should be there. So if we could take a, take a further look at that, one example.
I'm sorry, what page, I was kidding, like?
Page one of Attachment 5.
Okay.
So two examples I can give. The regulatory flexibility for innovative housing types, we list young adults. I would think that there would be a broad range of housing types, including seniors and small households. Another one on the top of page two, promote condominium development. And I don't know why that would only be intended for young adults. Maybe all homeowners?
Okay.
Maybe seniors. So just a little bit closer attention to that, and I'd be happy to take a look and provide some more feedback if you want.
Sure, that would be great.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
That's all I have for today.
I came across that as well. It's kind of hard to, but I guess you're just, Arthur, the reason you're calling those out is just to try to call attention to what it, as you stay, it's not excluding the other ones, it's just maybe.
Correct.
Right. Didn't we have a conversation in one of the meetings that the categories themselves are, like, it's not a full list? These are kind of categories from some source? Am I misremembering? I thought we had an issue about the naming of the categories and the people, and it didn't, it wasn't as diverse as we would have thought, but there's, there was a specific reason.
So, right, so you did have that conversation. My recollection is, yes, we were calling out the gap areas, and yes, there are other, you know, but that was because gap areas were identified, and we wanted to be, it wasn't necessarily exclusive kind of categorization, but it was saying, hey, guess what, this one strategy might help it, but it is one that might have a tendency to help some of the gap areas in particular.
I guess it, we can fine-tune what's there, but I think that, for the consumer of this information, you might, we might make that explicit.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it's.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any further comments on it at this point?
I'd like to see I'd like to see something in the introduction that references the critical edge that people are living on, their costs, why being cost burden is so significant in our battle against homelessness. Now, that may be too big of a leap to make in, in an introduction sentence, but I would like something that would flag people's, the reader's attention, that as you get further into this reading, you're going to see how significant being cost burden is, because you do reference it later in the, in this letter.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think that is a, that's a good point. I think that is a real, real trend, after going to all these meetings, that is a real trend to point out. And, but I also realize this is a housing strategy overall, but yeah, it'd be good if you could point that out. I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking, does, so, I, I think, does anybody else have any other comments for tonight with regards to this? Okay. Dave, you, we're going to make, may make a motion here, so, but, and then, so, do we need to just, do we need to continue to date uncertain or certain, or?
Well, let's have that. Before you continue the hearing, let's have the discussion about potential hearing dates. So as I wrote in the email, we've tentatively scheduled this to be continued to July 12th. Actually, I hadn't heard, I know that Mike has a conflict that night. Arthur, do you also, or are you, is that even an option at this point?
I'm worried about having.
I'm as much worried about having the product to, you know, in the time, turnaround time, to try to get it to a point where you're really, like you're saying, want to see a pretty complete document. So, and the 12th could be a scheduling issue for me, I mean, it may not be, but it could be. I'm juggling three different commissions and councils right now.
So basically, you're getting the 19th, just combining it with the PSRC possibly?
Right, that would.
Okay.
Especially if we can keep it to an hour.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely, okay, yeah, we'll definitely try to, if we do that, we'll definitely make it a point at the beginning to try to finish it by a time certain in the meeting.
And, and I didn't put this out there, and I haven't even discussed it with Mike, Mike and Arthur, is the 26th even an option to consider if we felt like we needed a, a whole meeting to itself? Are you, are you pretty confident we can wrap this up in a combined meeting?
And let's take it.
I'll be on.
Who's that?
I'll be out of town.
You're out of town, Roger. Anybody else know if they're in town or out of town on?
I'm not available on the 26th.
You're not?
I mean, I may be, but it's travel time.
So, and then the 19th, are you all, what's it?
I'm not here on the 19th, but could make the 26th, so.
Okay. Commissioner's orange, or?
I may be gone the week of the, of the 26th.
Sorry, I should be keeping track of this.
I should be here the 19th.
The 19th?
Yeah. I remember from scheduling, whatever, the July, when we did, 19th was the better day to kind of, 26th, 26th was not a day that worked for people.
You can be here with the, the 19th?
I can.
You cannot.
But I was the only one that couldn't be here on the 19th, though.
Jason, but you, are you, can you be here on the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like that bringing both items and just having the single meeting in, in July is going to be the best strategy.
I think that'd be best, yes. So does somebody make a motion with regards to July 19th?
I'll make a motion. I move to continue the public hearing on housing strategy plan update to 6:00 PM on July 19th, 2017.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. There's a.
I'll second that.
Thought I heard one, sorry, maybe it was just hopeful. I think, I think, that sounds good, okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second to continue to the 19th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, well, we're meeting on the 19th then, with the continuation. My apologies, my packet got all moved around, I should know this by now. Okay, so there's not a study session tonight, do you have old business, Dave?
No.
Or report?
I, I'll just report that the City Council had a study session on the miscellaneous downtown code amendments, the ones that you heard, plus one additional one last night, and I apologize, I didn't make a point of, of pulling commissioners for, for representative, but they are going to be doing a public hearing on July 25th. So I'll, I'll be looking to see if there's a commissioner that could be able to be there for that.
Okay.
They also have a public hearing on the clustering code amendments on July 11th. I don't know if Bruce has lined up anyone for that, but.
Okay. I'll, I'll plan on being there for both, there could be other, or if somebody else wants to attend, so, in my place. And any reports of members? Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.